Good evening, I'm calling the Monday, March 25th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting to order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible)
(Inaudible)
Thank you, everyone. All right.
First item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any requests for changes? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So move to second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Agenda's approved. Approval of the minutes from, looks like our last meeting was February 12th. Do we have any concerns about the minutes or requests for edits? Seeing none, entertain a motion to move the minutes.
Move to approve.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Posed.
Minutes are approved. We have two public hearings tonight. The first one is Eden Prairie Public Schools UNFI request for approval for guide plan change to public slash semi-public and parks and open space on 60.91 acres. Approval for zoning change to public and parks and open space on 60.91 acres.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to respectfully recuse myself from this transaction as I am representing the school district in this transaction.
Duly noted. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, will the proponent of the project please come forward? Welcome, good evening.
Good evening.
If you would state your name for the record and please tell us about your request.
Yes, my name is Kyle Fisher. I am the Director of Facility Safety and Grounds at Eden Prairie Schools. And if you would excuse me one second. Thank you very much. So yes, Eden Prairie Schools has signed into a purchase agreement for the property located 11840 Valley View Road, the UNFI building. I'd just like to start by saying that the mission of Eden Prairie Schools is to inspire each student to learn continuously so that they are empowered to reach personal fulfillment and contribute purposefully to our ever-changing world. And our values are what drive that. We believe that each person has intrinsic value. We believe that each person has individual gifts, interests, and talents. We believe that community benefits when each person contributes. And we believe that relationships flourish on a foundation of mutual trust and support. And we believe that continuous learning is essential for personal fulfillment, opportunity, and success. And I bring these things up because Eden Prairie Schools, we support our earliest learners through the adult education. And I believe that our TASSL transition program exemplifies both our mission and our values. And if I could, I'd like to take a minute to talk about that TASSL transition program because that is what we intend to house at that location. TASSL Transitions opens doors of opportunity for adults with special needs ages 18 to 22. You'll notice in an upcoming video, it calls out 18 to 21. State law actually changed to 22 years of age. We provide special education programming for these students, skill development, and job support, usually in a one-on-one scenario where we have need for a significant amount of square footage. And here we have a video talking about some of our students in that TASSL program.
The TASSL helped me pretty much find what I really wanted to do because coming from high school, I didn't know what, you know, to do. I had some communication problems, like did not know how to communicate with some other people, so I really kept stuff to myself. They gave me some tools that really helped me in the long run.
TASSL is a great opportunity for our students, 18 to 21 years old. Hopefully for students to find themselves a little bit that may need an extra cushion of time. They're open. They're at a point in their life that they're open to discovering or exploring what they need. But it's also if they can find some passion and find a career path. But it's a place where they can try stuff and fail too. You know, he came to us last year. He's just so likable, easygoing, and has a quest for learning. He's quiet, so it's interesting kind of to prod him a little bit to see what he wants to do. But he really kind of gravitated trying the auto body and pathways.
I'm more of a hands-on type of guy, so they really said this might be a good path for you. When I first started, we did welding, and welding was fun, you know? I never expected welding. Went to a phys, like a car, and like it was a dented car, and then we pulled out this, like a dent. Looking back at it, I was like, I might see myself doing this, you know? Like, I could see myself doing auto body in the future.
So we try to meet the students where they're at, and then the goals are what you want to accomplish. And again, it can be for their career, for a job, but it could also be independent living. How could we think about you living independently with a roommate in a year or two years? We hopefully get their resume in place, cover letter, some of the basics you would do to get a job.
So my goals were pretty much to get down notes, ask for a teacher, try finding what you really like, and I found what I really liked. It's kind of, it's worth it. And then the things they taught me was a lot of things that I did not know, like budgeting, looking for houses or cars, you know, if I want to move out. TASSL is like, they work only on you. If TASSL didn't come to me, I don't know. You know, I don't know what I would be doing.
Thank you. And so at the end of this summer, our TASSL program, which is currently located here in this building on the lower level, that lease is no longer being, going to move forward. So we need to find a new location for our students. And we thought that this would be a great opportunity for, an opportunity for growth. So during this time, and this is our typical process here, we gather community input regarding our programs, specifically TASSL program and any others that we may be interested in or would like to hear from the community regarding this space. So this will all happen during the 24-25 school year. And this property is going to make, make it possible for us to think about new ideas and new opportunities where we can serve our community. We've also reached out to the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District for partnership and educational and community building activities. Been playing a little bit of phone tag with them, but messages that we've exchanged back and forth are very positive, and they're very interested in connecting with us. And at this point, I'd like to invite Dirk Tedman here to come speak.
Thank you, Kyle. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having us here to talk about this space and what it can mean for our students and for the community at large. I'm Dirk Tedman, our Executive Director of Marketing and Communications for the school district. And I am excited to talk to you a little bit about what this space can look like as we move to the future. And so we went through a similar process about 10 years ago. It was called Designing Pathways, if any of you remember that process, to really envision what does the future of Eden Prairie Schools look like. You know, there's a lot of questions. Why would a district need such a large property for this program that currently is housed in the city center? And part of this is because we're trying to look to the future and build what our community has deemed it needs, whether that's our families, our students, our business partners. And we go through a really extensive engagement process to understand what their needs and wants are, so that we can build a school system that delivers on what our community desires and prioritizes. And in our Designing Pathways efforts, you can see here that we started with an academic design process, and then it led to facilities updates and eventually a bond for additional renovations, such as the work that was done at the middle school. And this is the same process we'll be going through with this new property purchase as well. We're celebrating our 100th year of inspiring each this year. We appreciate the proclamation from the mayor and the partnership with the city in that. And this sort of facility allows us to really dream into the future. We're anticipating enrollment increases over the next few years. We're at a nine-year high of enrollment in Eden Prairie Schools, unlike other districts that have faced declining enrollment. The quality of what we offer, the partnership with the city and the community, all of these things are driving people into our schools, which we think is a really beneficial to our community and to the city as a whole, and to the future workforce that'll be available because of that. And as we look to what facility needs are there, we also know you all have a plan over the next 10 years to add 1,000 more units within the city, you all being the city, not just the planning commission, which will also lead to increasing enrollment. And that was part of a demographic study that we just did last year with a third-party research company to try and project what does our enrollment look like. The other thing that this property allows us to do is bring back students who currently need to be served elsewhere. We have to outsource some of our special education services and programming for students in grade six through 12 before they get to that TASSL transition program. And this property gives us the space to be able to look at what that can mean for the future in bringing those students back, which we estimate will be more than 200 students, who will be supported through programming. And we need a space to do that. And our current buildings are all at capacity. And so what we're excited about is this process where we know we have a need. We don't know exactly what we need to use the space for, but we know the space is needed. And so this academic visioning process that we'll go through, similar to the designing pathways process of 10 years ago, will show us a path forward about what our community is looking for and allow us to then enact it right away and begin work so that we can have future-ready students who have the skills that they need to succeed, not only in school, but in business and in life. So just wanted to bring that forward as an example of the community engagement process that in my role I help oversee to make sure that we have buy-in and participation and really make sure that we follow through on what people are looking for in their education that we provide in Eden Prairie Schools. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Kyle for the last couple of slides here.
And so as Dirk talked about, this is about 165,000 square feet. And we do anticipate the need immediately for approximately 60,000 square feet for our students in that TASSL transition program. We realize that with it being located on Bryant Lake, there is a great opportunity. As I mentioned before, working with Nine Mile Creek Watershed District, having this as a gathering place for both school and community events, to have it as a dedicated and engaging space for professional development on those non-student contact days and, and other times. For example, both our middle school and high school, Eden Prairie Middle School, Central Middle School, and Eden Prairie High School. Eden Prairie High School is rented out every single day, with the exception of the 12 days that our custodians are not contracted to be in the buildings. So every single day, that building is in use by our community. We expanded and added on to the middle school, created that performing arts center to alleviate some of that pressure that was on the high school. And we, we're almost at capacity each weekend at Central Middle School. Our school district, I feel, is that gathering place, is one of the gathering places within the city of Eden Prairie. And we feel that this could be another one of those gathering places. And yes, we do have a lot of stuff in the district. So we do anticipate having a centralized warehouse area. That would be in the, in the lowest level of the building. It would not be utilizing any of that office space or things of, things of that nature. That space would be dedicated for that forward-facing opportunities, as I had just discussed. And with that, I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Any initial questions for the Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Appreciate that introduction, and that really helped me get my head around a few of the questions that I had bouncing around inside of it. Is this land, you said you had a purchase agreement on it, is this contingent upon getting your guide plan approval, city and the Met Council?
Yes, it is.
Okay, all right. So we won't have to undo what we're doing here, it sounds like, if you opt not to proceed with the purchase, because it sounds like you're in ink already.
I don't see any reason why we would be backing out.
All right, good, good, good. Thanks. You spoke to a couple of the other uses, and that's really what I wanted to ask about most, is your, your letter that we got in our package talked about other, you know, unique opportunities for community use space, environmental learning, outdoor spaces, a play area for the students. I wasn't exactly sure what that meant because they're probably too old for playgrounds, but you're going to take up some of the pavement for that. This is kind of a unique project for us to review because it's just a guide plan change. Sometimes I'll be asking, I don't know, if others will also maybe some deeper questions as though this was a site plan review, but this may never come back to us as a site plan review. So we're just kind of digging a little deeper.
Sure.
So it sounds like your program isn't set in stone. More to the point, it will evolve based upon the community's needs for this space. So I'm not only hearing that there's going to be program space for students, but also you're inviting in the community, maybe for special events and things like this. There's, sounds like enough parking on the site to accommodate that, but it'll just evolve, I guess, right?
Yep. Just like with any of our other program that we have at Eden Prairie Schools, we, we take the feedback from, from our stakeholders. So those are billing occupants, our students, our family members, our teaching staff, and our lead administrators. We're, we don't operate in a vacuum. So we're always, we're always evolving and working to meet the needs of those who we serve.
Okay, okay. And then again, you answered another question of mine, which was, it seems like I always hear on the news about our enrollments dropping, I guess, around the state, maybe around the country. And I'm glad to hear that's not happening in our community, thankfully.
Yeah.
So that was good to hear. A lot of exit strategies, trying to shed excess real estate for school districts is a really tough, tough thing to do. So that's, that's not our case right now. So
No.
That's why I was wondering, getting 165,000 square feet when you only need 60 right now, and then all of that
Mm-hmm.
Stuff I hear on the news. So
Sure.
That's good. The westernmost driveway off Valley View, you have two driveways in. That's just next to the second parcel that the seller wants to get rid of and you guys aren't interested in. Is that going to be used solely for you folks? Are you going to be interested in maybe having an access agreement to share with your future neighbor?
Yeah, it's my understanding, I'm not involved in the, in the, the legal aspect of it
Sure.
With, with the seller or the other potential buyer. But I do know, I can confirm that there is conversation. We are continuing dialogue
Okay.
About, about use of that second drive.
Great, great. Did you have anything to do with the traffic report that was prepared for the project?
Unfortunately, Design Tree Engineering is the, our civil engineering firm.
Okay.
And John Schutte, who, who was heading that, unfortunately, he's not able to be present. He was up and got stuck in Alexandria.
Okay.
So that's where he offices out of. But we are continually working on that. We're still navigating that, that piece of the, of the traffic study.
Okay. We haven't seen it yet. I think I'll probably pose some questions to staff about that then, about the different uses involved. Good. And then I see some audience members here tonight. And again, this is not our purview of the Planning Commission, but again, just, there's probably going to be questions about taxes, or taking a taxable office parcel off the tax roll for our city and putting it into public where probably don't pay taxes. And then whether this is up for a referendum or not, I'm not sure, but I'm assuming your students don't pay tuition? Or is this, are we funding this scholastic education through our tax base, through real estate taxes?
Dirk, would you like to speak to this part? I'm just the facilities guy.
I can speak, and I might also invite up Dr. Sean Hoffman-Bram, who's our Executive Director of Community Education, because they also are involved in the space and can speak some to the funding mechanisms. But on the taxing, the district was able to, through its lease levy purchase authority, get this at a cost of less than a dollar a month to taxpayers. So the tax on a $550,000 home is only $11 a year. So there is not going to be a major tax impact in the immediate term to people. Again, as we go through that academic visioning process, what we're calling in education jargon, but that engagement process with the community about what are the skills you want in students, what are the, the knowledge that they need to gain apart from state standards, what are the soft things that businesses and career fields want? Those pieces will all help us determine what are the facility needs for the future. And just like in the designing pathways work, from that, there may be future bond or referendum campaigns if there's additional funding needed for those facility upgrades. But that would be after that engagement process to determine what the needs are. To the question about funding, students in TASSL do not pay tuition. It is funded through state and federal aid dollars. We also have money that comes to the district in the form of grants. And then our community education programs have tuition-based and fee service programs, which Dr. Hoffman-Bram could speak a little bit more to. But overall, we are fortunate to be in a position where this will not be at a great expense to the taxpayers in the near term. And any future expense to the taxpayers would be after a robust engagement process, as was done for the facilities upgrades that happened in the designing pathways process.
Good evening, welcome. It's always dangerous to invite community ed to the table because we're kind of like Parks and Rec, and we just want to take it all over. So, so I, I always have my ear to the new initiatives and prospects in the district because we are sometimes that first connection with community members, rentals, groups, that constantly want to have programming, more access to facilities, different things like that. So, and our programs are primarily fee-based. So when you talk about renters, when you talk about our preschool programs, our summer enrichment camp opportunities, many of those are tuition-based. And we see ourselves being able to find some great, more expanded opportunities for learners in the summer over non-school days, different things like that. So we're very excited about serving the community, talking and working with the city as my department very closely does, and then finding what we can do that kind of fills those voids and gaps for here, for people in Eden Prairie.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Sounds like a wonderful fit. Thank you, Chair.
Any other initial questions?
Hi. Because I live on Bryant Lake, I have to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any plans or consideration about using the lake beyond for programs?
You know, not officially. There, there's been, when we've taken tours of the property, and we've, when we've walked the grounds, and even looked out the windows, that's always, always the, the top comment is what can we do? How can we provide engagement for our students and our community members? So we would love to. We don't know in what capacity yet, which is why I reached out to the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District initially to start that partnership. Thank you very much.
Jeremy, you want to take us through this Planner's Report?
Sure. I'll try to address as many comments or questions as I can. From, from a staff perspective, we see this as really, it's a map change from the comprehensive plan and our zoning map. The use is, for an educational property requires a specific land use guidance and a specific zoning. And then what we're proposed to do here is, or what their applicant is asking for is to change, basically change our maps to allow that type of use. As Mr. Farr alluded to, this is a unique request. We usually see some building associated with the project. So, you know, something tangible to look at. So we don't have that here yet. We, this is really almost the first step to use the property from a school perspective. If there's any changes to the exterior of the building, any new development, new grading, new tree removal, that will require some review, whether it goes to the Planning Commission or Council, or just stays at the staff level. Depends on the scope of what that work is. But this is not the only time you'll ever see this, this project or this building here. Ms. Grody, you mentioned about use of the lake. In 2008, and even as far back as 1978, when the original development agreement was approved for this property, there were certain stipulations and restrictions on the use of the lake in terms of construction, docks, mooring, things of that nature. Those still are in place. Eventually, the City Council will review a comprehensive development agreement amendment that will change primarily the owner of the building, the reference to the owner of the building. But there's been no suggestion to add lakeside or lake improvements as part of this use. So the commission should feel comfortable that those standards that were applied in 78 and in 2000, 2008, excuse me, those will hold as we move forward. Development Agreement Amendment, if that was to ever be changed, would go through a public process. Likely, the City Council would have to react to that. So just by changing the UNFI user to the school district user, you shouldn't expect to see rampant development there. There'll still be a public review process for that. When we review a comp plan amendment, you know, primarily changing uses, we do, we do want to take care and kind of recognize what's the, what's the uses around the property. This property is a unique one. Again, it's right on the lake, but it's also kind of on its own little island. There's one undeveloped parcel to the west. There's industrial properties to the south across Valley View. And then across the lake, there's a single-family residential. We don't see this change in land use from office to public or semi-public schools, churches, as being a negative from a traffic perspective, from a noise perspective, from a utility impact perspective. So our, our general standards when we're considering is land use change and a zoning change. We feel that they're being met with a request because there isn't known changes. And again, if there are proposed changes in the future, five, 10, 20, 25 years from now, all properties evolve, and there'll be a, a public review process if, if things change in that, in that respect. I mentioned the further review. I mentioned the building prohibition for docks and mooring and things, you know, the active uses of the lake, which have been a concern. And really from, from a respect of lake protection and environmental protection, the proposed use really, I think is a strong candidate for that because there's no, no commercial need for the, for the lake, you know, for boating. Residential likely would have a lot, a strong desire for lake access and lake dockage, which I think would be maybe detrimental to maybe the, some of the goals of the neighboring property owners. So from those perspectives, you know, impact, impact to the comprehensive plan, impact to the zoning district staff is supporting this, this, these changes as proposed, recognizing that the comp plan amendment needs to be approved by the Met Council. And that is a process also. But we do recommend approval of the, of the changes proposed here.
Thank you, Jeremy. Do we have questions for the city?
I have a quick question. I noticed in the letter, there was a mention of the Phase One being completed, but I didn't see what the results were. If, if anyone can share that.
A Phase One?
Yeah, in the letter from Don Paulson, the engineering, says a Phase One environmental assessment has been completed for the transaction and is included in the submittal.
Sure. Commissioner, we didn't require a Phase One at this stage. We typically do when there's a building project being proposed. You can certainly turn it over to the applicant if they're, if they'd like to speak to that Phase One results.
Yes, thank you. We did complete a Phase One environmental assessment. And the only finding or area of potential potential concern was there is an underground storage tank, 10,000 gallon, that we, we had questions about. So we conducted a Phase Two environmental assessment. Those tests have not come back from the lab yet, but initial reports indicate that there's no, there's no leakage from that 10,000 gallon diesel tank into the, into the groundwater or the soils at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for the city?
Mr. Chair? Can I follow up on my traffic report question that I had earlier for the applicant? With the evolution of program changes, as well as the ones that were itemized here, I just wondered how the traffic engineer addressed all of those different potential uses and variable square footages, without being too conservative for?
Carter will speak to this in probably more detail, but what I learned from talking with the engineering team is, is based on the information known, the traffic doesn't generate any concern. As with any property where we see an evolution uses, we do ask the traffic question, and that's an opportunity for additional information, but maybe Carter wants to speak to more to that.
Sure. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Just to get to your point specifically, the goal of the study was to really document the existing condition, what's out there today in the office use, and, and understand what that traffic demand was, and then compare it to what we knew at the time, which was the TASSL and the alternative learning center, you know, students that may be there, and what that traffic demand was, and really see that, the difference. And that's kind of where we saw that, that, that gap between office and the, and the students. There wasn't a, an estimated program accelerated, you know, change there, because it wasn't, it wasn't known. As you kind of heard today, there's, they're not sure of what that is. Just based on, you know, simple math of using that 60,000 square feet, even if you triple it, you know, with same type, similar programs, you know, we're not even close to the, the office use, traffic demand. As Jeremy alluded to, we're pretty comfortable with the, you know, the amount of traffic that may or may not be on Valley View today with that same type of traffic going through that signal and the four-lane divided, you know, essentially highway through there. So not a lot of concerns, but if anything major came through, it would go through our process again, which was also noted in their, their review documents as a comment to be part of that review, if there were major changes to any transportation, circulation, or things that affected the roadway, and also include the county in that as well. So since it's their, it's their roadway and their signal.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak in favor or against this project or request, please do so now. Not seeing anyone, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
All right. Motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor, close the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearings closed. Further discussion? Commissioner Meddy?
Overall, you know, I'm, I'm in support of this. I, I think it, traffic's definitely not a concern, and office use there would be the most intense, you know, parking and, and trip generator. And I think the, for me, the only downside of this whole thing is it is taking a, you know, taxpaying property off of the tax rolls. It's about, I think, $380,000 a year right now in tax revenue for that one parcel. So my, my only suggestion would be, and I hope, I think it makes sense for the school district to go forward with this transaction, but to keep in mind, by maybe engaging with, with, with a broker or something to explore, maybe selling off some of the excess land, I think there probably is still some even within this parcel, in order to help, you know, put some potential money back on the payroll, and frankly, also help raise funds to do any sort of major renovation or project that they would have planned here. So I think that could be a win-win, so, but that's just a suggestion. But otherwise, yeah, I'm, I'm in support of this.
Thank you.
I second Commissioner Meddy's support. I think it looks like kind of a win-win to me. I don't see a, I don't see any real big, I don't see any real downsides at all, and, and I believe, you know, the public processes and the processes that the school district goes through will allow appropriate input and, and to, to give us something that, that will be good.
Other comments, discussion?
I just have one more small comment. Going back to my Phase One and Two, just as long as the Phase Two comes back cleared and any, you know, recommended remediation by the engineering firm, that's, that's the only concern I had.
Another discussion? I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman? Move to recommend approval for a comprehensive plan amendment zoning district change, all on 60.91 acres, as represented in the March 25, 2024 staff report.
I have a motion from Commissioner Kirk for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Weber. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone else like to abstain?
I abstained.
You abstained?
Yeah.
Commissioner Grod abstains. All right. Thank you. Congratulations, moving forward. Nice presentation, good luck. All right, moving on this evening, we have another public hearing. It's a code amendment, office use and industrial flex tech, request for amending city code section 11.30 to allow for more office use by percentage in parcels zoned, I two and I five. Jeremy, would you take us through this request?
Yes, thank you. Relatively, hopefully, simple comprehensive text amendment here, trying to incorporate some of the goals of the ASPIRE 2040, which talked about, or which introduced the industrial flex tech land use category, and really applied it to a lot of our industrial area. Much of the property in the Golden Triangle area and some other pockets kind of throughout town were identified for this industrial flex tech land use. And it really is, it's a combination of, of our I, I two and I five zoning districts, our, some of our office districts, some of our, kind of our employment kind of goals have been identified as this industrial flex tech area. What we're proposing to do, recognizing that we want to capitalize in as much employment in these areas as possible, what we're, what we're proposing to do is recommend, is remove that 50% cap currently in the I two and the I five zoning district, also in the I gen, but we're not going to change that one yet. But in the I two and the I five, there's a limit, 50% of the gross floor area of the building can be used for office. And while we don't have a huge number of, of waivers over the years, we've had 15, 20, where we've asked for extensions beyond that 50%, we see it as an opportunity to just remove a, really an unnecessary, burden is a strong term, but unnecessary regulation that doesn't necessarily jive with what our goals are from a, from a comprehensive plan perspective. So you're not going to see a steady stream of, of businesses coming forward to, to expand, you know, beyond the 50%, but we think it's a good, good statement to make to the business community to try to, to add more employment in, in an area we think it's appropriate for, without really any negative impacts. You will, in terms of use, you may see some parking waivers if they can't meet the parking requirement, because manufacturing has a less parking requirement than in office use, but we can cross those bridges when we get to it. We just see this as a good, positive movement, move forward towards implementing our, our comprehensive plan. I, I want to point out that this does not change the I gen use distribution, where there's still a cap for 50% office. The I gen is usually our more robust industrial areas. Sometimes there's outside storage in those areas. And we, we didn't want to kind of combine that, while office is still appropriate there, we, we don't want to promote that to the extent that it may detract from the usability of some of the more robust industrial areas. So that's really, I want to make that very clear upfront. Staff is recommending the change as proposed in our staff report, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any questions for the city right away? All right, this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward and speak for or against the proposed changes, please do so now. All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
A move to close the public hearing.
All right, move to close. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor of a closed public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearings closed. Further discussion on this item?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Farr.
I can vouch for the demand for this change in the zoning ordinance. We've been hired a number of times over the last 10 years to compute precise percentages of office occupancy versus warehouse occupancy in this Golden Triangle area from landlords, especially in multi-tenant buildings where their leases come and go, and some people want a little bit more office space, some people want a little bit little, and they're always on the threshold of that, and it's been a problem for them in the past. I think that'll relieve this burden, sorry for the word again, but I strongly support this. I'd like to say it makes sense to me, too. It just gives a little flexibility in the employment aspects, the employment locations in our community, and, and I think that's a good thing.
Mr. Meddy?
I, I agree. I think it helps, just reiterate, the reason why this flex, you know, industrial was created in the first place, because you have kind of changing business needs, and even, I think it helps support small business and the growth cycle of a business, too, because I think you might start out, and then a, a business might not even really know how their needs will shift within a space. So I think it, let, gives people that flexibility.
All right. Entertaining motion?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Farr.
I'd like to make a motion, move to recommend approval for the amendment to chapter 11.30, as represented in the March 25, 2024 staff report.
All right, a motion of Commissioner Farr. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Sherwood. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Would anyone like to abstain? Okay. Thank you, Jeremy. Any planners' reports this evening? Somewhat of a somber evening, I believe. Commissioner Meddy, is this your last meeting? Is that the case?
Yes. So I'll do a brief little thank, thank you all. This is my last, my term is expiring, so really enjoyed serving on the commission. I hope maybe one day I'm back, we'll see. Keep an eye on things, and good luck with, to all of you, and thank you so much for letting me be part of this.
Well, thank you for your service. You were, you've been on for six years, and it's been a pleasure serving with you, so thank you so much.
Thanks.
All right, do we have any other members' reports?
No. I think we'll just stay here until Commissioner Meddy wants to make a motion to adjourn then.
I will move to adjourn the March 25, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
All right, I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second, and it was a good motion.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you, everyone.